I will open our Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee meeting for January 11th. If we could stand for the pledge. The clock is... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation's end of the Constitution of Justice for all. Thank you. We will do introduction of members. We'll start with you.
Matt Cadrano, Millville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Ashley Johnson, Blackstone.
Maya Gonyea, Blackstone.
Jill Pila-Gallarani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you. And we do have our student reps here tonight. Happy to see you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Hope everybody had a good holiday break.
Same. What do you have for us, students?
Do you want to start off with basketball, and then I'll continue the door decorating?
Sure. So, our boys' basketball team is currently 3-5, and they won a close game against Nittany County, so that's a very good conference win on Tuesday. And they were passing Nittany up with a score of 61 to 59. Our girls' basketball team is also on a roll. They are 4-2. They're very excited about that. Some of them are in my math class. They're doing really good right now. And their next game is at Douglas High School at 5:00 p.m. And BMR, of course, had a successful pep rally, and the seniors took the W, but the sophomores were second, so I'm pretty happy about that. As a sophomore, I'll admit. And it was held on Thursday, December 21st, and the theme was famous cities, and each grade had their own city.
Yep. So, the NHS is also starting to plan their empty ball fundraiser. We've started by making balls, soon to be glazing them. I believe the official date is going to be Wednesday, March 13th for that. And we also had a door decorating contest. I think it was the day before pep rally, right?
Yes.
Somewhere around that week, but we did do our door decorating contest with the theme of famous cities, that each grade had to decorate their doors, so the doors were decorated all Christmas-themed. It was a fun way to bond in our advisories, we could say. And then, our winter sports are off to a good start, including winter cheer, indoor track, boys' and girls' basketball, our swim team cooperating with grafting, winter guard, winter percussion, jazz band, and woodwind crier. Ms. Sanchez's video club also brought back BMR news. We've had a couple of videos so far talking about the weather, sports, school lunches. It's been kind of an interesting way to get to know about what's going on at their school. And the swim team currently is general, 6-1, and they want to meet against AMSA, the Advanced Math and Science Academy.
Very good. Where can we catch the BMR news?
Um...
Do they play it in your homerooms or...
Yeah. They do post... They do play it in homerooms. I think they'd email it out to the teachers. I can see if they can add you guys the mailing list, possibly. I don't know if they posted it on the YouTube or anything, but no...
I haven't seen that come across.
I was in one of the...
You were a guest?
Yeah, the videos. I was, yeah.
You didn't share it in your weekly app?
No, I didn't. The video of me talking about MSBA. I'm sure you guessed. Probably had enough of that.
All right. Well, that's exciting. Any questions for our student reps? All right. Thanks.
Nice work.
Well, thank you, and we will see you guys next time.
Yes. Good to see you.
How can I ask? Good night.
Next, we have Consent Agenda A, which is warrants and minutes of meeting for the December 14th meeting. Just looking for a motion on Consent Agenda A.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Dan.
Second.
Second by Tara. Any discussion on warrants or the minutes? The warrants are coming to us in DocuSign, and that's working well, I think. All those in favor to approve Consent Agenda A?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have public forum. Is anyone in the audience that's here to speak to the committee? See some familiar faces, but agenda's on our agenda in a bit, so, all right. Moving on. School committee. Student recognition for the Eagle Scout project. Are they attending, or are we not?
So, he will not be able to make it tonight.
Okay.
Apparently, there was a scheduling conflict with his college tour. I think I moved from the storm on Sunday to tonight, so we're going to replan that for...
February 8th?
We're going to try and shoot for February 8th.
Okay. No problem at all? That was information. Declassification of executive session minutes for October 12th, November 2nd, and January 4th. So, October 12th, 2023, November 2nd, 2023, January 4th, 2024. Do you have an executive session?
No. That should be... Those minutes should have been up with the Consent Agenda A, so you can strike that from here.
That was a workshop.
Yeah, that was in the wrong place. So, we'll put the January 4th workshop minutes on the next meeting agenda.
Make a motion to approve the October 12th, 2023, and November 2nd, 2023 executive session minutes.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara S. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. And next, on our school committee agenda, we have Millville Elementary School water next steps. We have Jennifer Gill here, the Chair of Millville Board of Suckman, if you want to join us. We did invite the board, just because they joined us at our last meeting, and we want to keep this open line of communication. And Jennifer had sent an email saying, "Please let us know if you're going to talk about water." So, um... So, here we are.
I think Peter's on too now.
Is Peter here?
Looks like he's...
Hi, Peter.
Good evening.
Okay.
All right.
Nice to see some of you.
That could be interpreted a couple ways, Peter.
It's a small field of vision, hasn't it?
I knew what you meant.
So, we did have a workshop last Thursday. I know you had a meeting on Monday. When we met last December 14th at our last meeting, and you joined us, we kind of said, you know, "Let's regroup and work together to see what we need to be able to get back to the kids back to Millville Elementary School," because that is our ultimate goal, no matter what anyone else wants to say or think. That is where we want the students, Blackstone Millville Elementary Kids, to be in that Millville Elementary School building. Whether it's a building project or not, or, you know, that is where the littlest learners So, I don't know. I mean, how do we want to...
We had a couple votes on Monday.
Do you have an update for us?
Yeah, I have a couple. We had a couple votes on Monday that I can update you on. So, we outlined a few things in terms of bottled water. So, first, we will always provide bottled water if Mass DEP tells us to do that, because I don't want any trouble with any kind of government agencies. I think that's bad. But if they do happen to lift the requirement before the start of school, because there will be a change in population, and that could change the load on the water purification system, we'll provide bottled water for the first two months of school, so the first 60 days is specifically what was agreed to in the meeting. And the parameters for that were to ensure the haloic acidic acid cannot exceed the 60 parts per billion for both months, and the tri-helo-methanes also cannot exceed 80 parts per billion for both months. And so, if there were an exceedance in September, October, across either one of those disinfection byproducts, then we would kind of take it on a monthly basis and continue to provide bottled water. We also extended the hearing date to move the children. I believe there had to be a hearing by December 31st, so we agreed to offer the school committee an extension to March 15th. I think that, because it's a regional agreement, Blackstone would also need to agree that. I'm not going to tell anyone else what to do, but we extended that. And then, the third thing, and this is an update I got from Peter today, to increase the load on the system, Dr. Gulick has designed a process for that and shared that with... It's funny, Peter, his name just escapes me. Scott. To give that process to Scott. So, if he wanted to, like, here's how to run the water more, to see how it responds if there's higher water usage and things like that.
Is that something that can start immediately?
Um, yeah. Peter, do... Did Dr. Gulick give them the process? Peter? I don't know if he can hear me. He can hear you guys.
Peter, can you hear Jennifer?
No, I messaged him something about the audio. That's what...
Yeah, no, I can't hear her, so if I don't want to be redundant...
That's gonna fall.
There's no additional... While you're doing that, Tim, I can just speak if you can hear me. There's no new information really beyond what you saw at your last... Well, we were at the meeting in December. Test results for January, you could go into the lab yesterday, so we wouldn't have those results for, you know, several days. We did do lead and copper testing, I guess, after the meeting that we were with you on, and that tested fine. And notice will go out on that probably in the next week or so. Notice did go out yesterday, as expected, on the quarterly disinfection byproduct exceedances based on the annual quarterly running average. So, that got out and posted at the school, from what I understand, and on our website, and hopefully on your website. So, and I presume Jen talked about what the board actions were taking Monday night.
Yes.
So, Peter, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay. I have the microphone next to me.
The one thing that I mentioned also was the process that Dr. Gulick was providing to Scott regarding an increased water usage, so we could see how the system responded. And Erin asked if we could get that, like, I don't know, what's the timeframe for that? Has it been provided already, or is he working on designing it?
No, I don't know when, but I'm sure he's going to work on it soon. He was working with Scott on that, and he only mentioned to me that he had, last night, that he had spoken to Scott and had talked about that, and then he would provide Scott some, you know, locations and type of timeframe, but he had to do some, I guess, math to come up with the final thing on that. So, I would expect that soon.
Okay.
You know, probably next week, he should be able to start doing that. I mean, Scott should, you know, the team there should start doing water demand increase, if that's what you all want to do.
Have you heard any other communication from Mary Jude lately? Just...
I feel like I watched a few of your meetings, and you've said, "I'm going to, you know,
clarify this with her." When's the last communication with her?
So, she emailed me Tuesday around the water... The notices, because we got it on Thursday. And then, so, the Millville Town Hall is not open on Fridays, and it's only, it's, you know, kind of part-time hours, to be honest. So, when she sent it on Thursday, and then Friday, no one responded, and then Monday, no one responded, so she's like, "Hey, I should send this to you." So, and to be fair, I just saw it today. Like, I kind of rely on Peter during the week a little bit more. So, that was the last communication I had with her. I did email her and see if she and I could meet, because when I've asked, like, "How many quarters?" Because I said, "Hey, when can we lift the water requirement?" She's like, "Well, not after one quarter." And I was like, loud and clear, "Got it." But how many quarters? So, I still don't know what that is.
So, no answer?
Yeah. Because we're happy to play by the rules. I just need to know what they are.
So, I mean, I'm happy to hear about the process that is going to be in place to increase the water usage, I guess. I had emailed you during the week about the...
Corrective Action Plan?
Corrective Action.
Yep. So, I looked on the website, so we still have the one from June up there, and there's an email that we have in our packets from December that said, "Hey, we're amending the corrective action plan," but I asked Peter to ask Dr. Gulick to put together something more formal. So, we did have just an email, like, "Hey, here's an update," and it's just a couple paragraphs in an email. So, I don't mind sharing that with you.
And that's actually your inbox, both Erin and Jen, so...
Because we just need to get the permanginate out of it, right? That was... And...
So, just so you know, the way the process works, and I've been involved... I wrote two corrective action plans early on when I got involved in Millville. One, the very first week I started. And typically, DEP doesn't even comment on it. And the first one, Bob Boswick did provide some, you know, helpful edits. I submitted. They don't have a particular form they require for their corrective action plans, nor do they generally, in the three subsequent iterations of corrective action plan, and as well as the first one once edited, they do not even acknowledge receipt, let alone provide approval, you know? But it is the corrective action plan, and Dr. Gulick sent that in. I forget the date. I'd have to look back at the email I sent, but anyway, you'll see that. And the revision was to just, you know, replace the permanginate with the game plan we're following, since we're testing very well.
So, he sent it to Mass DEP?
Yes.
So, what I remember about that, Peter, and I believe you're accurate on the others that you filed, but when we were sitting here in May, Mary Jude had said you had to have an approved corrective action plan because of the continuous violations, like, and so I feel like it was being handled a little differently, and it had to be approved by them. It had to be posted on your website. And then, and she was disturbed back in May, which I don't even think we should get into that conversation, that it had not been put into action at that time. So, I think that's why, you know, we weigh a little heavier on that, because for me, and I think for the committee, it's... We're still in that mix.
Mode.
Yeah. From last spring, when it was necessary to submit it to Mass DEP.
Oh, yeah. So, I don't recollect her saying that, but I'm not going to dispute it. They did not... They have not acknowledged nor approved any of them, and I'm talking about four, including the most recent, what I call amendment, which Rich sent to Paula, Karen, and Bob Boswick. I'm looking at it now on December 12th. And in that, all it really was, was a, you know, a paragraph, and it just says that this is the new corrective action plan for the HAA 5 MCL exceedances and so forth, so...
But I can ask her. I have no problem following up with her and asking her.
We can, you know...
Yeah. I did try to get in touch with her before Christmas, but they do a longer... Then I emailed her, she was already out for the year until January 3rd.
So, as a committee, do we want to talk about, you know, what we feel is important for our kiddos moving forward in that building?
Do you want me to recap kind of where we left off? We had three, actually, and obviously, we can discuss them further and differently, but after our workshop last Thursday, January 4th, the three items we came up with was, first, consistency in positive and clean water results of at-capacity use testing for 180 days. Second was stabilization and consistency in the water operations and management team. And our third was the DEP-approved short-term corrective action plan and long-term plan.
Which I believe you have an update on the long term, right? Or Jen?
The long-term plan is partnering with Uxbridge, so we're continuing that path.
Any update on that grant?
No. I don't have an update on the grant.
Anxiously waiting.
Yes. $3 million. That's what I would like to have.
All right.
May I just add too?
Sure.
The workshop that we had, and I watched the meeting from Monday night, and I have other things that I'd like to bring up later after this, but we all worked cooperatively, so like, we didn't lay demands on you. I don't know if how, if that's you take it. Like, even with the increased capacity, the discussion was if the school district could help in any way. So, we didn't want to use your resources or have you guys have to bring in resources, and I'm glad that Peter said that, like, Dr. Gulick has come up with a plan with Scott, but we wouldn't, like, we just... We wanted to see like 180-day, mimicking a school year. And some of the conversations was not like 180 days straight. I know I said this myself, like, to mimic the school year, because you've got to also, like, we don't use it on weekends, it's not used at night, and so you don't... So, the system can recharge, and it can be accurate. And so, the whole conversation, in my opinion, on the school committee in that workshop was absolutely, I think, the entire school committee wants to see the kids back there, and we wanted to do it in a responsible way and assist you at any, within our ability. I hope I'm not speaking out of line with that, but that's pretty much what the conversation is, as far as the monitoring and the use of the capacity, so we could see some consistent results. Thank you.
Sorry, Danny. Did you say he came up with a plan with me?
Oh, you... I think you had just stepped out, but...
I did.
They said he shared it with you.
Yeah. Dr. Gulick is working on a process to give you to mimic water uses, like, show you what to turn on and how long.
He was saying he'd tell us how many faucets we need to run and stuff, and I didn't say that. He'd be the ones running around, turning our faucets or anything.
So...
I don't know how that's going to be handled.
Well, we definitely are going to have to find a way to get it flowing, whether it's, you know, I don't know if he's feeling that he needs to space it out through the building, or has there been a conversation yet? I was going to come to you next.
No, all he said was he could tell us how many faucets we need to run and for how long. The school district is going to be responsible for that. That was specifically said that would have to be discussed, as to who was going to be running the water.
And it would be... And we are going to have to do our part. We're the ones in the building, so...
Yeah.
And we're asking for this to be done, so...
Yeah. In fairness...
Yeah, it was discussed at the workshop.
Yeah.
Maybe Claire had come up with a plan.
No, they said that Dr. Gulick did, and shared it with you.
He came up with a process.
Tell us how many faucets we need.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're on the same page with the talent in the school district, as far as that goes.
We're happy to help.
Yes. Yeah.
So, yeah, that was the takeaway from our, you know, discussion, where we feel like that's what we need to see to be able to commit to getting the kids back in, whether it be before September, or, I mean, I think it's still possible with the 180 days, as long as the water's testing, okay? I don't see that we'd be moving them before the summer months.
No. I'm not sure we can hit the 180 before September. It depends if, I mean, if you're going to run... I don't know what the well needs as far as refilling, and I'm not sure how that whole piece of it works, but that would be essentially six months of just running it straight. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if the well can actually manage that level of load on it.
But we do have the, I mean, something new for the committee to maybe go back and absorb is the fact that they've now made a motion to supply the water for 60 days, regardless of what that testing is, so...
Well, if I... I think this is, and maybe it's just my confusion, so there's a directive from Mary Jude to supply bottled water.
Yes.
Okay.
She gave this to them at that meeting, actually.
Right. So, one of the questions, so that directive is still there?
Yes.
And so, what's the requirement to lift that directive? I think we're both...
I don't know what it is, and I've asked. So, she said one quarter is not...
Right.
Enough, and like, I get that, but I don't know how many it is. So, I emailed her today to be like, "Can we revisit this?" And I don't, I don't know what it is, because like, I don't know if you heard me say this, like, "We want to play by the rules. Just tell me what the rules are."
Right.
We need to see two quarters, we need to see three quarters. Maybe it's four. You know, maybe it's a whole year. I just need to know.
I was watching your vote for the 60 days of water, and, but you're under a directive, so you have to provide it anyway.
We have to provide it anyway, so...
But they're saying, even if that's lifted over the summer, we're going to have water in there.
We're going to have, right. Even if it's lifted for the, like, say they lift it July 1st, making it up.
Okay.
So, we're fine. We're, because there's going to be a change in the school with the capacity, so we thought providing for the first 60 days would be a good faith effort. And then, if there is an exceedance on either the haloic acidic acid or tri-helo-methanes on either of those months, then we'd provide bottled water for the next month. And then, the one thing we didn't discuss actually would be, like, so say we have an exceedance on one of those two months, so then how many more months would we want to see kind of steady state to provide bottled water? Is it, so we need to see three months in a row again, or is it six months in a row again for ourselves to lift our own kind of bottled water requirement? So, that might be a discussion.
I think in the last 15 years, there's always, there's always going to be that time, and I wasn't unfairly misquoted, but I do want to correct something that was said. I never said it wasn't about the water. I said it wasn't about the notices. When I said that last December 14th.
Yes.
It's not about those notices going home and the fear mongering. It's about getting it to a better place, right? It is about the water, 100% about the water. But when we were having that conversation in December, it was, it was, "How are we going to stop those notices from going?" And I was saying, like, they've, it's, for at least 15 years, they do come and go. Those are going to still come and go. And I just think we're going to have to have, like, a comfort zone of knowing, almost like you said five years ago, I'm not turning this water on and off. I'm not, you know, they come out a little later. Maybe there's going to be some other type of testing we can do where there's not such a delay. But I don't think it's going to be like, "Oh, there's a notice bottled water," like, that we're running to you in that sense. The kids are still going to be asked to bring water in. We've always, we've always done that.
Yes. I don't see the difference between water and water notices, because the notices go out because of the water. So, I don't see those two things being separate.
It's not because it's a public letter. It's not because it's hung on the door that we left that building. It's because it wasn't, it wasn't being addressed. It wasn't, and that's the water. The notices have been there forever. I honestly expect to continue to see them once in a while, when there's an off test. So, I'm not looking at water and testing, like, I'm not saying we, when I said we didn't leave, I didn't say we didn't leave because of the water. We didn't leave because of notices. That's been going on for years. So, I think we'll still see notices, in all fairness. That would be probably impossible to request of any water operator. I mean, it would be nice. I would hope that when we connect, that there's, you know, better...
Consistency.
Consistency, yeah.
If I may, then, oh, I mean, there was, their interpretation of our reasoning for moving the kids was disingenuous at best. I mean, we were told by, and it was stated in their meeting, that we were, that the water was not safe to drink and cook with by the director of the DEP in our area, and then it was stated in their meeting that she retracted that statement. Do we have that retraction?
She mentioned, she's talked about that with Peter and myself, so, I mean, that would be something to talk with her about.
That would be big, like, if that statement was retracted by the DEP, we may have...
But I think that's why she said that you don't need to move the kids, because...
Did we get that statement either?
She said that. That's in them.
Yeah, she, she had said that we didn't need, she said that we didn't need to move the kids.
Okay. But the water was...
Cooking the pasta and stuff like that.
Yeah, you couldn't eat with the, right.
Or drink.
Use the water for cooking.
Right, and that's why we were providing...
Questionable about washing.
It wasn't questionable about washing, that's never been true. That statement's been, like, this is a problem.
I didn't say, I'm just, if it's not safe for cooking, is it safe for...
Yes.
So we'd like to have a professional, you know, tell us that.
Yeah, oh, I don't blame you, for sure. So I think that someone, someone was posting things for Mary Jude, this was probably just August. But I can certainly send her, like, is it okay to wash your hands with this water? Is it okay, like, so what's the FAQ? So, okay to wash hands? I can ask, okay for cooking? Okay for consumption? And she, you know, she might say no to that, to the last two, or she might, so what we're struggling with in Millville is that this water, like, our haloic acidic acid and the trihalomethanes, that are giving the same issue in Western Mass. Is it Springfield, Peter?
Correct.
And they don't require bottled water? So there, people in their homes are drinking this water and cooking with it and bathing with it and taking showers, and it's the same water, but we have to...
I think, yeah, and Erin, if I could, I think it's fair to get Mary Jude to, to actually clarify what she said back at the May 15th meeting, which I know that for you all was very important in your decision-making, when she said that the water was unsafe to drink and unsafe to cook in. She has since, and I think I mentioned when we were there back in December, I have notes from, you know, a Zoom meeting that Jen and I had with her on October 2nd, and again, in quotes, and I take pretty good notes, "water not being safe is not accurate." So I think she's got, it would be good, I would love to see her clarify the safety aspect of the water, because DEP's notices, the wording of those notices are subject to their approval, and their approval is pretty clear about the, you know, the health risks and the population that might be more sensitive to health risks, and I fully understand, you know, the concerns folks have, but it is over long-term, long-duration usage, which we've, you know, discussed numerous times, and, you know, and even Bostwick there, the key water guy, says, you know, that's 70 years, liter a day. I mean, you know, and the equivalent on the cooking is 20-plus servings of pasta a day for 70 years straight. So, that doesn't necessarily make you feel safer, but I just sent something I saw on the news today to Jen regarding bottled water, and bottled water has 400,000 pieces of plastic in every one of those liter bottles is what they're showing in studies, so I'm anxious to see what DEP starts doing about that. The bottled water we provide you is not single-serve, it's the five-gallon bottled water, because the state, you know, Commonwealth won't allow procurement for a single-serve bottled water.
So I'll take the action to get clarification from Mary Jude, and I did ask her if she could maybe attend a meeting here with us?
I was just going to say, would we just feel more comfortable if we met again?
Yeah.
Yes.
We keep talking about May.
I think she could come February.
It's a long time.
Yeah, I think she could come in February, because I asked her if she could attend a school committee in January, February with me, and she said February, I think, that's...
I think that's a great idea.
I, I hope you can under, I hope you understand that, that's stated by the director of the DEP that it's not safe to drink or cook with, and so our action with the kids is to take them out of that environment.
And that's what we did.
Yes, so, and I still stand by it, but if we're getting notes, and I, I believe Peter's, what he's saying is, is, but wouldn't that be important enough to get something in a more formal from...
Yes, why don't we have a ready meeting?
And I think some of our misunderstanding with each other is the lack of clarification on directives.
Communication, I believe 85% of this issue is communication.
And I, I, I would, I just want to, I have to clear up one thing, as far as the extending the date, the deadline, that, that would be a, although it's a good faith effort by the Millville Board of Selectmen, that would have to go to town meeting for an amendment, even.
I'm confused by that, I don't know if we even want to get into it, we, we didn't use that to come out.
I understand, but that, anything like that would require an amendment by the town meeting. Any, any alterations, unless it's an emergency situation for the superintendent, any alterations or extensions would require a town meeting vote.
Our attorney said that, because since it was just temporary, that was okay.
Yeah, the Board of Selectmen doesn't have the authority to make that decision on behalf of the people.
But we didn't use the open hearing to move the kids, or are you saying we need it to move them back?
I just wanted to take, I just wanted to take that away as an issue, should it be one.
And I appreciate, I think it was a good faith.
Yes, exactly.
But we'll be going back to the original regional agreement if we...
That was the intent, always the intent, we have no choice but to, and it's been done before, and several times, when Millville has come to Blackstone, and Blackstone has gone to Millville regarding situations since the 1980s.
Most recently was MOLD.
Section 3, 3E, I think, in the regional agreement.
It's just that, it was suggested that we were in violation of the agreement.
Not at all.
And we weren't.
We already rebutted that, like, our lawyer already wrote back on that, so...
It was suggested last Monday night, so I just wanted to make it clear that we are following the agreement.
I think we have different opinions on that, but we can not discuss it.
Well, I mean, just like you always say, I go with what the lawyer says.
Yes.
And our lawyer said, we did everything by the regional agreement, and put it in writing, and we shared that, right?
There's historic precedent, we've, it's happened for both towns, several, on several occasions over the last 30 years. And if I could just clear up one more thing, I have, I can go back further, but in 1982, the regional agreement was a change to bring the two, the two towns' elementary schools in. Since then, the town of Blackstone has been paid for the water at the Kennedy School, the Maloney School when it was on Main Street, and even when we moved kids to St. Paul's, because that Blackstone, believe it or not, supplies that portion of North Smithfield with water. But I came bearing receipts.
Oh, thank you, that's great.
And this is, you can see, the Kennedy, the BMR and Hartnett School, paid by bank transfers, so I have from 2006 on, and keep in mind, it wouldn't have mattered, the, the kids weren't intertwined until last year or the year before on the elementary schools anyhow, so, but the, here's the bills from the BMR and JF and the Hartnett School, paid by the district, you'll see it's a transfer, and Blackstone still pays, because we're an enterprise, we pay for all-town buildings through the enterprise, because for years, the ratepayers of Blackstone were footing the bill for our elementary schools.
Can I have those? That's hugely helpful.
I will, I'll give them to you.
Thank you.
And I left the, the check thing in my truck, I, I don't mind, it got a little wet from the rain.
So you'll get, Jennifer, the copies of that?
Perfect, that would be amazing.
And we have, so, we're going to get you these three provisions that we feel need, do you want, do you need, do you want to talk about these at all, do you just want to bring them back to your committee?
I think I'd like to bring them back to the Board of Selectmen, I guess, I just, I think it's a little unfair to spring these now, like, I wish these were discussed when the kids were originally moved. We're moving the kids, and we'll put them back when you do this.
We, I mean, if we talk about that timeframe of August, September, I mean, in all fairness, we thought Promaignate was coming in, and other, that corrective action plan was still happening. So when we met in December, we collaboratively said what, you know, we need to work together to see what, how we get back to the, the kids into that building. That conversation had never happened before, because we were waiting for you guys to do your stuff with your water.
Yep, so...
I think this is the soonest we could have gotten this to you, but I don't think, I mean, and I know it was just rebutted a little bit, but 180 days, and, and again, this was discussed last Thursday before the good faith vote of a 60-day water supply? I, I don't see where that should be a brick wall.
Okay, great. On the Promaignate, so at the May 16th meeting, I, the Board of Selectmen did say we were going to stick with chlorine, because we believed that the proper operation of the system would fix everything. So, and I, that was said by me towards the end of the meeting, and I, I've been trying to, like, timestamp things, so I could be like, just look at this part, so I can do that, but that was discussed then. And then at the subsequent, me, August 31st, it was fix the water, fix the water, fix the water. So that was kind of the only thing that was stated in terms of a directive from this committee. So, I'm hoping we can, like, we're, we are trying to put forth good faith efforts, like, with, like, even if they lift the requirement for bottled water, I understand that there can be some discomfort, it's going to be a new building, kids in school, so that's why we offered the 60 days to try to be cooperative. So I'm hoping that we can maybe be a little cooperative on some of these things as well. So, but I think it makes probably sense for me to take it back to the Board of Selectmen and discuss it a little bit more, and then, I don't think that any of the three things we came up with are, like, surprising, though. It's kind of what we made the vote on. The 180 days is surprising to me. So we did put a timeframe there.
The capacity.
The capacity, eh, capacity use.
But if, if we're getting consistent, like, I feel like we're going to have to be able to talk about that. We're going to have to, as a committee, be able to say, okay, it's been 100 days, and every test is perfect, you know? And it's June 1st, so...
So where are we getting these tests?
Scientists might tell us better, you know, they don't have to run the full, he might suggest, you know, extrapolating, just...
And who is the scientist, though, who is the water operator? Because we've talked about, you're getting Dr. Gulick staying. So he's, he will never, he will never leave us high and dry.
He did resign publicly at your meeting.
Yes, so he made his big speech.
So we kind of haven't gotten an update since then, I guess.
Yeah, so he, though, so that was, he made that speech, but we, we haven't, don't have anything right. I don't know, Peter, if you want to comment on Dr. Gulick, he's interesting.
No, he's going to continue on, he does want to transition out, it's really a question of getting the right person to transition in, and we, you know, have identified that, but have yet to close the deal on that. So, he will continue with us as the operator, as long as we need an operator to continue the way he's been doing it.
Okay.
And if I could, just back to what Mr. Keefe was talking about on the regional agreement, I, I appreciate exactly what he's saying. On the extension, though, the, the question is really, if there is a way to do an extension without having to amend the agreement, but by way of a side letter, and all parties, attorneys, legal, legally do it, the board, that's why they took their vote, because they would, you know, they support that in, in Millville, the extension, because, you know, depending on what you all want to do, that certainly could have budget ramifications that are beneficial to all involved here. So that's, that's one of the driving factors. You know, it's not getting into the spinning contest of what you have to do to get the kids back. I, I think that, you know, everybody has their own position on that, but nobody's, you know, pulling out the hair about what you all are doing or how you're going about it on that.
So Peter, with that being said, what do you want to see come out of that extension?
Well, if you, if you were to try to do, you know, get to where you're in a three-school situation, which I know there's been some possible thoughts of that, that would certainly be cost-beneficial to the communities, it seems to me.
So that, I understand what he's saying, but it's two different things.
It is, I don't understand why...
It's two different things, we, we can't, like, we can't shut down a school for next school year entirely without revisiting the two towns in the agreement, you know, because, like I said last time we were here, then, for example, if, say if it was a complex, shut down, everybody going to the Kennedy School, Millville's not going to want to carry all those capital costs, you know, and, and on your own, like, we, like you currently do now, as far, and Blackstone would do the same thing. Right now, if, if Millville was up to par and we're ready to go, we, at the school committee's discretion, we can, we can move them back, and, and under the emergency order that we have. But the, we do recognize, and we've discussed it for the last year, that, that we have a, over, a space issue, we have too much space, and so we would have, that's something the district, this committee has to, will take in consideration in the budgeting, whether it be the Millville Elementary School or the, or the, or the complex. And moving forward, it's a bigger conversation with the MSBA loans and everything else, but it, we wouldn't be just shutting down, we, we can't, we can't shut down a school next year right now, even if we were in the December, in the December timeline, where the school would come out of the district. The school would, in order for a building to come out of the district, it's going to take a lot of lawyers, negotiations with the towns, and changes to the agreement. In my opinion.
It's not something we were entertaining this spring, I don't, if that was the intention of that extension, I don't...
Just to offer our flexibility, I just want to say one more thing about Dr. Gulick, although, when we transition to our permanent water operator, we're always going to keep him on as a consultant, because he's just too smart, so he's never going to be, like, far away, so that way, like, and if we have someone else, you know, and a blaze of glory, we can always just bring him back, so we'll always kind of have a Plan B. It's not ideal, because he's, with his experience and credentials and things like that, he's expensive, he's really good, so...
And I think that's why we're a number two, stabilization and consistency in the water operations and management team.
Will always be.
We need to make sure that what happened last spring, you know...
Was summer, it was June, July 27th, 26th.
Yeah, but you just said May, in May, you said, you said we were going to continue with chlorine, and the old water operator was like, I'm not doing it, so, with that being said...
That's why he left.
There's, you know, there has to be a consistent team working to the betterment of that, you know, with the same interests.
So Dr. Gulick will always be involved in some way, he might not be the operator, but he'll be a consultant or something, so he'll always be close by, keeping things interesting for us all. And just having the updated corrective action plan. Yep, so we can, I was talking with Peter, because he's like, well, we have this email, and I was like, do you want me to write it? Like, this doesn't look right to me, like, because if you look at the corrective action plan we have right now, but there is no, like you said, there's no format or anything, so this is really all it entails, but we'll work on getting something that looks a little bit more polished.
So can that replace the one on the website?
Yeah, we can, we can post it on the website, yeah. But I think, I would rather edit the one that's on the website and just take, like, make it, because that has a lot of information, instead of just putting up, like, two paragraphs, like, oh, we're just going to stay here. Like, I think having the background and everything available as part of the corrective action plan is beneficial.
I just, I'll ask one more question, Madam Chair. So, Millville is fully aware that they're responsible for their water system, even though part of that filtration facility is in your town-owned building, that's leased to the school.
Yeah, so we talked about that as well, as well, to get maybe, and we talked about this at the May meeting, and then I think, you know, we get mad at each other, and everyone took their ball and went home, like, that's just what happened. But I think we should maybe have the lawyers get back to having an agreement on the water, providing the water and water operations in the Millville Elementary School, so that's like an addendum or an appendix or whatever we do with the regional agreement, so it's clearly stated. Because that's one thing that makes Peter's job easier, too, is if it states clearly we are responsible for this, then he's like, fine, then that's what I'll do, so, yeah. So we're very open to making that formal and seeing water operations are covered in these ways by the town of Millville.
Okay, because the school district are not water operators, so...
Correct.
That's nowhere in the, yeah, so it was just always...
Would you like our attorney to send that over to yours?
Like, a...
To clarify that it is the town of Millville?
Yes, that would be amazing.
Can you, Kelly, do that?
Sure. Oh, yeah.
She did send me an email, like, about a meeting, and then I don't know what happened, and it kind of just fell off. But, yeah, that would be, and that makes everything easier for us. Does that go in the lease or the regional agreement, or would that be what the lawyer would? Whatever, I think it's helpful for Millville for it to be in the regional agreement, because then it's buttoned up and, and clear.
Any other discussion on water? Next steps?
So, well, I'll bring this back to the Board of Selectmen, we'll discuss our next meeting, which is on the 22nd. Like I said, I emailed Mary Jude today to try to get a meeting with her, and then I also, I'll email her. Your next meeting is February...
My next actual meeting is February 8th.
8th, okay, perfect, I remember. So I will invite Mary Jude, and I will CC Peter, Erin, and Dr. DeFalco, so that is, okay, then I'll just...
And I think that would be, like, keep it simple with Mary Jude, do we, we feel we need anyone else at that meeting?
She might bring Bob Bostwick, just because he is head of the drinking water stuff. So if we have Mary Jude Pixley, and then Bostwick, I'll let her know that we would like herself, and if she would like to bring any other supporting cast members, we would be happy to entertain them.
Cast.
Does that seem reasonable? Okay, and then also in that email, I'll, I'll put in some questions, like, is it okay to wash hands? Is it okay for cooking, okay for consumption? And then just mention that, the statement that Peter said, or do you want to do that in email, or would you rather have her here to discuss it? in email, or would you rather have her here to discuss it?
I think both is good, discussion and in writing.
Okay.
I don't know what comes first.
We can give her a list of things we're looking for. In a way she's not caught off.
Yeah, I don't like to surprise her.
Yeah. Like, this is what we need.
Yeah.
So we can continue collaborating and.
Is our list is similar to your list, I would, that we.
About can we cook, can we clean, can we wash?
Right, right, and those are the questions, I think, yeah. As the, as the water operators, they, they can express our concerns to the DEP, so that we're not, I don't want to give the appearance that we're making demands, more than we're looking to work cooperatively to make decisions in the interest of.
I'll put, so it's, I'll be like, can you clarify, you know, we captured a statement of water, not being safe is not accurate, would you agree or disagree? And then, is the water okay to wash your hands? Is it okay to clean surfaces with? Is it okay to cook with? Is it okay to consume? And then, whatever she wants to put in email, and we'd like to discuss this at the February 8th meeting as well. Okay?
And then what are the parameters around the directive to have the bottled water? Like, when would that be lifted?
Yeah, I'd like to know that, too. Like, like I said, we'll do it as long as she says. I don't want to make enemies of anyone there. Okay, so I added that to the list. So wash hands, clean surfaces, cook, consume, directive on bottled water. February 8th here at 6:00 PM. Anything else? We are trying to make you feel comfortable, that's why we did the 60 days, so that, and if there were any blips on that, then we would continue to provide the bottled water.
I picked, I picked up on that watching it. And I also thank you for coming once again tonight, you know, and Peter. And it appears as though, even though there was a call for it, we have avoided war. There was a call for a war. Yeah, a 52-minute mark in your meeting, but hopefully we can.
I don't know what was said. Now I have to go back and watch the 52 minutes again. All right.
We just want water, that's all. Not war.
The building needs, regardless of what Millville's going to do with it, needs water. No update on that grant?
No, and we thought we'd have an update now, and so I'll, when I speak with her, I can, I'll add that to the list, like any update on the grant. And then I was also going to reach out to Representative Soder and Senator Fatman, because they've been very generous with Millville, so anything they could provide as well, so, because I think we looked at a cost of roughly $2.5 million, and that was kind of a rough and tough thing that we put together, assuming like a pump and the length, width. So it came out to roughly $2.5 million, and she's like, with the $38 million and us being at the top of the list, I felt kind of good about getting that entire amount, but since then, I don't feel as good about getting that entire amount, and so I don't know where we would get the funds.
Any idea how much Exbridge applied for?
Peter, do you remember off the top of your head? I don't have that in my notes, I don't think.
Do you think we're being looked at jointly with them now?
We are being looked at jointly, but when they, like, they won't say we gave, like, let's say they gave $10 million between both towns, they won't do it that way. They like it to look like, oh, we gave $2 million to Millville, we gave $8 million to Exbridge. They like to list out more places, because then it, it makes things look better. So we are being looked at together, but the awards will be given individually.
Okay. But everything will have to work together to.
Yes, yeah, and they're very, they're very motivated. They've seemed, they've been very amenable to meeting with us.
Separate community, separate community funding amounts to be determined yet, but, but the fact that we're doing this together makes it more attractive to them to distribute those amounts.
If I can, I'll put that list to like, any updates she has on the grant, we'd like to speak to that as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for showing up and.
Yep. I have to show up. That's my job.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. This is perfect. Honestly, this just answers so many questions.
Okay. Moving on. We have some workshop dates. I think these were agreed upon on January 4th.
Fair mention, we didn't do anything with them.
Oh, okay. So let's make sure, check out your calendars, everybody. January 18th, January 25th, February 1st, I think those are all Thursdays.
Yes, ma'am.
6:00 PM, 6:30 for the first one, and 6:00 PM.
That's correct.
Oh, we have school building.
Because we have school building.
Is that Zoom now? Is that in person?
In person.
Oh, huh. Sorry, Jane.
She can Zoom though, we can, I can bring a laptop.
No, I totally just told her, was it, did I miss the Zoom? Was there a Zoom?
Not for that.
School building, no? I'm making it up.
We can have him happy to put a laptop up.
No, no, she wanted to come tonight. She thought it was school building. Okay, so January 18th, 6:30 for a budget workshop, and these will be, Jason, anyone presenting to us?
Yes, on the 18th, we will have the two elementary schools, the middle school and technology, and I'll send calendar invites to everybody, so you've got that all laid out. And then on the 25th, we will have the high school athletics, music, special education and ELL, and curriculum and facilities. So it's more of our high school than, like, a central office type class centers. And then the first we have open, so the committee can decide if you want to, you know, see another class center again, and ask somebody to come back, or if we want to huddle up and work through some of the specifics, or you may decide that you, like, we don't need it, and it's fine, and we can release the date. And then also, not on here, but was posted today, the finance subcommittee will be meeting next Tuesday at 4 o'clock to do a walkthrough of the budget as well.
Tuesday?
Yes, 4 o'clock. At Millville Elementary.
4:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was just posted today, just with the holiday and everything, we just wanted to make sure we gave it enough time.
So do these dates and times work for everybody? Okay. Actually required, so looking for a motion to approve our workshop dates, so we can post them.
Second.
And that is as written here. So motion made by Tara and second by Dan, any conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And who the fun stuff, field trip request, Roger Williams Zoo.
Motion to approve the first grade field trip to Roger Williams on May 20.
Oh, they're planning ahead, so nice.
Second.
Motion made by Tara, is there a second by Dan? Thank you. All those in favor of the Roger Williams Zoo field trip, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Great, just one item under my report this evening, and it's more of an overview than anything, and I just need to get the slide deck up here. Tim, if you wouldn't mind throwing that slide deck up there. We are going to walk through our preliminary FY25 budget. Yeah. It was with the. It was, that was embedded in it.
Is it the complete budget for the school committee?
No, 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 it's the, hang on. Yeah, of course. That's strange, you got these, but you didn't get that, because these are in there. There with me one second, Tim, it's coming your way. It's coming, it's just loading. It's taking a little bit. Okay, Tim. Perfect, should have had any second, there you go. You gotta love technology when it works. Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we're going to take a walk through our preliminary FY25 budget, and this is really just the tee up to our workshops. All right, perfect. So I won't spend a significant amount of time going through a lot of the information that we have, that we have reviewed, which was at our December meeting. You know, specifically the guiding structures that are helping us set our budget priorities, our student enrollment. We are actually at 1513, so 1,513 students. It is a little different than what's in your packet, and I want to just explain that. You would think that the enrollment piece is an easier thing to calculate. We have 1,513 students in our seats. But if you were to look on our Department of Education website, you'll see 1450, that's actually going to change to 1472. That's not, because our enrollment is lower, our enrollment is actually 1513, but we also have school choice. So it's just important that the community understands that the enrollment they see on the BMR profiles page for the Department of Education is not the actual enrollment. They do not count the school choice kids in, because they're not Blackstone Millville residents. So what you see on the profiles page, and this is just a forecast if there are any, I know there's a little bit of a narrative that, you know, our, our school system is shrinking, and we don't have any children, and all the things that go with that, that actually isn't true. Our enrollment is stabilizing over 1,500. And as a matter of fact, just this fall, we have welcomed over 30 new kids into the district that have, that have actually moved into town.
So this isn't what our chapter money is based on?
No.
Or the number online is not?
It is, the number online, it is. So the 1472, it is, and that's because we don't get chapter $70 for the other school choice in, we get the $5,000 separate that goes into another revolving account, that's the school choice account. So those are the receiving tuitions, that we use as a revenue offset, that you see on our budget every year in our budget book. So we do, we do get to count those students, but not in the foundation enrollment, so we get far less per student than we would, because it's school choice. But it works the other way around, too. Right. So BMR students who leave, if you're, you know, if you're going to, you know, one of our town schools, not BBT or North Oak Aggie, they also get the $5,000. So it pretty much washes itself out from that perspective.
But we get, they counted in our assessment to the, like, to the community to pay for that student.
No, those kids are the kids, so in the 1513, those are the BMR kids that are actually in our town and in our seats.
Right.
So the kids that go to, you know, Mendon Upton are not counted in that number, but they're not counted in Mendon Upton's number either, they, because they get the $5,000 school choice.
And I'm, yeah, okay, I was thinking the minimum local contribution would be based on.
The foundation enrollment and what the, what the state determines.
When the state determines.
Yeah, the town is eligible to pay.
It's good to see 15.
Yep. And just as, last year, our enrollment was around the same, it was around the 1460, and again, right now, it's 1472, that can change, but with our school choice kids in, we're actually at 1513. So just wanted to explain that. All of our demographics are fully updated, so you can get a sense of our student population that we're supporting. And we've been through this before, so you'll see some slight changes. Each year, we're seeing a smaller percentage increase in our L population, our English language learners, those students whose first language are not English. You can have a student whose first language is not English, but they're multilingual, but they do not qualify for ELL services. Either they've exited out because they've, they've required level of proficiency for English that they need to, or it's because they came to us fluent in English, but fluent in other languages too. The state determined measures, we've been through this at great length, but as the committee knows, I like to actually put all of this in one place. This is, I think, an important piece to share with the community. It gives a good snapshot of, you know, the outcomes we're getting for the dollars, you know, that we are putting forward into the budget. And so all of these data points have been updated to reflect our current standing, but wanted to make sure to include them all again. And I do put the state averages here, so we can see that in most cases, we're just a couple of points off from where the averages of the state in most areas, not that that's necessarily the benchmark, but it's good to have a general sense. And then, of course, all of our students, all of our schools made significant progress. We got all of our points for chronic absenteeism, so we've made good headway there. We have all of our points for kids enrolling in rigorous coursework, those are AP classes for juniors and seniors specifically, and a 74% passing rate in all AP exams. Those are, those are really important numbers to share with the community. And I do that only because I know at this time of year, sometimes there can be conversation that is less, in some cases, less than supportive of the school system, because we're talking finances, and that should not be the case. We're getting very good outcomes for what we're doing. We have a very low rate of students dropping, our graduation rate is strong, our five-year graduation rate, we do have kids that need a little bit more time, is actually over 95%. So those kids that are engaging, they are graduating, they just need a little bit more time. So we have a lot, a lot to be proud of, for sure. Though what's driving the FY25, we've been through this too, so I certainly won't belabor, but these are all some of the main drivers that we discussed at our meeting in December. Of course, again, the other factors, and then you're going to see these really come to light this evening when we look at the expenditures. As the committee knows, we spend this time of year, particularly January, early January and through of our workshops into early February, really working to get our expenditures right. So what is it as far as programming that we actually want to put forward for our community for the following year? Then we start to see the state revenues come in, once the governor files her budget this year. At the latest, it will be January 24th, it could be sooner. Governors historically have tended to file their budget the day after their State of the State address, which for Governor Healy, I believe, is the 17th, so I think it's next week. So it's possible that she could file her budget the end of next week, but she will have legal leave for the 24th. So just important, because once we get the governor's budget filed, then we'll actually starting, we'll start getting a sense on the revenues. But as we know, those revenues change as they work their way through the legislature, all the way through the winter and spring. But, so that'll be the other piece that we'll be waiting, truly waiting with bated breath to see what the minimum local contributions are, because that is a huge concern each year. So with that, I do want to take a few minutes and just walk everybody through, looking back at FY24. It's important, a lot has happened since this time last year, so it's really good to kind of re-anchor our thinking around, well, how did we get to a place where we actually had a certified and voted budget by both communities? So last year, if you recall, we had a very large increase in our minimum local contribution assigned by the state, and it was, frankly, it was the second highest in six years, second only to the FY23 minimum local contribution, and when the state assigned to both Blackstone and Millville, an increase of over 6%. Frankly, it was just under 7%, I believe it was in both communities. That is significant. That's before the school department does anything. The state says to both towns, you're, you're required to pay 6% more than you did last year. And they have their own formula for calculating that, based on community income, et cetera. So you can see last year, we were in a place where Blackstone had an increase of 5.8, almost 5.9%, which totaled $443,302, again, before the school district requested anything. The state said you have to pay the school district this much more. The state said you have to pay the school district this much more. And then similarly, from Milville, they went up 5.73% or 100, just under 139,000. But both towns collectively increased by $582,262. Now juxtapose that with the Chapter 78. And I know we talked about this last year, but I want to bring it up again, because there's a lot of conversation about the Student Opportunity Act and all the wonderful things. And I certainly wouldn't say that that's not the case for communities who were really recipients of that. We saw an increase of our Chapter 70 dollars by .9%. So we saw the increase to the towns, right, at 5 point, collectively about 5.8%. And then the increase to our Chapter 70 dollars was .9, $94,000. We're grateful for the $94,000, but that certainly is not gonna help us close any gap that we have, any fiscal gap that we have. So the school committee did what the school committee, frankly, since my six years here, have always done, which is worked very hard to not only get the expenditures where they are able to be absorbed by the community, but also, what are the other offsets we can put forward as far as revenues? So you may remember, in our meeting in December, I had put forward just a couple of offsets that were really quite large, as far as dollar amounts. It was the SRF funding, it was the Circuit Breaker, it was the E&amp;D. Those totaled 1.8 million. However, I wanted to show a couple of the other offsets, because I do think it's important for us to see them upfront. We additionally, and on top of that 1.8 million, the school committee put forward all of our entitlement grants, which was to the tune of $248,000, and our IDEA special education grants at $483,000. Collectively, those offsets were two, over 2.5 million. Again, the big concern for this year is that Circuit Breaker amount, we're not gonna have that amount. We'll have something, but we're not gonna have that amount. I can tell you that without a shred of uncertainty. We will not have the SRF dollars. And we, we won't know what our E&amp;D is until sometime in February. We are thinking it will come back somewhere north of 400,000. We don't know yet, until DLS goes through all of our accounts and balances that out. So it's certainly, you know, we won't have an E&amp;D, what we even spent last year, from E&amp;D to help offset the budget. So I want to just jump into the more specifics and actually get into the numbers. So let me just, we're just using this for the first time. So let me, I think it's this one. I can't read that. Does that say budget or grant, I mean, or capital?
The top one is budget.
Budget, okay. I think I want this one. You are really good, Tara. Perfect. Okay, so, yeah, thank you, Tim. So what we have in front of us tonight, and I'm gonna share this with everybody electronically in tomorrow's update, but I wanted to just kind of walk through, so you knew what was here before, before it showed up on your inbox. Just like we did last year, we will have a very collaborative electronic working budget workbook that actually has, at the bottom, I'm gonna scroll over here. Sorry, this is a different little mousepad here, so give me a second. You can see in the bottom, all of the cost centers, right? So if you scroll across the bottom, you will see all of the specific cost centers. And you are allowed to go to Nurse Karen reference only. Just if you look at that. We actually, she had put her whole budget together, and then we broke it out and put it in the specific schools, mainly the high school, just FYI, if you're wondering why it looks like that. But so you can see any one of the specific cost centers by just clicking. If you want to see music, if you want to see athletics, you can click on it. Everything is right there. All of these roll up into what you're looking at that is in front of us right now. So if you look at the, just, sorry, I'm kind of just getting used to this little mousepad here. Okay. So if you look at the top, you'll see the sum of the FY '24 budget. So you'll see all the functions. I know these are familiar with, you know, everybody's familiar with these. You'll see the functions all the way to the left, School Committee, Superintendent's Office, Business Office, Legal Services, et cetera. And these are the things that we'll get into the weeds with when we go through our workshops. But by all means, start delving in, you know, whenever you're ready. You will not only see the function code name, but you'll actually see the function code right next to the name, and you'll see this little plus sign. We set up this year to try to make it even more simple, pivot tables. So you don't have to click on, you know, salaries or athletics. You can click this little plus sign, and it actually breaks everything down for you that's in that line, and it shows you the subcategories that it's in. It's super, super easy to navigate. We're trying to get better at this every budget cycle. You might remember, last year, we had to go back and click the tab in the workbook, and then go back and click the total on the summary page. We don't have to do that anymore. You can just click that little plus sign, and it will drop it right down for you. You'll see the full account number. You'll see the amount that we spent last year, the amount we're proposing this year, the difference. It's literally all right in one place. One of the things I want to caution everybody to, because it took me by surprise, it took me a minute to figure it out, I had a little mini panic, because all of these are formatted, as far as the formulas go. When you look at the salaries for Unit A and Unit C, remember the steps and lanes, because not only do our staff, they go up a step, but they have a COLA, Cost of Living Increase on that. So you can see each specific employee's increase. Some will be what the 2.75, that's what the increase is. But some will be higher than that, because they went from step five to step six, and they got the COLA. So if you see those numbers, you know, you kind of pause for a minute, but just know that that is to do with the step and lane system. And some of our educators and our Unit A staff will change a lane as well. So you'll see sometimes a larger increase due to a step increase, a lane increase, and a COLA. I will also say, I'll just take a minute to plug this. The Blackstone Valley superintendents have put together all of our Unit A contracts from 2019 all the way up to current. We are outrageously ahead of some places, and we are very competitive. So kudos to the school committee for getting us, because when we started this journey, we weren't. We are absolutely competitive, as far as salaries go. And so I just want to forecast that as we're thinking about our negotiations with Unit A coming up next year. I have all of that contract information available if anybody's interested. So just a thought around the salary piece, as you, or before you delve into that. Some of the numbers are, are quite large, as far as increases go. And as we work through our cost centers, we're going to, at our workshops, we're gonna see that. And there are very good explanations for why, you know, for instance, in legal services, why did we see a large increase? Well, we're gonna be in negotiations next year. So my sense is, right, we may need to have access to our attorney more frequently than we probably would have needed in the past. So you'll see places, it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, any of this we can adjust, but this is our starting point, just to give everybody a sense. The other piece to mention, in addition to this, everything that our cost center managers are asking for is in here. So this is our starting point, and Dan, I think you might have mentioned this in one of the finance subcommittee meetings, this is where we start to do our work. It's the administration's work to compile all of this and bring it forward to the committee. And then through the workshop, you know, the committee and the administration work collaboratively to start to whittle this to a place where it's, you know, it has the programming that we need to put forward, and it also feels like it's reasonable and digestible to the communities. The red are the increases by function code. The green are the decreases by function code. So you can see, if you look across this particular line, Therapeutic Services, this is the 2325 line. Again, you can hit that little plus sign to see what's there. You can see what we budgeted for in FY '24, $136,572. You can see what we budgeted for in FY '25 preliminarily, $122,30488. You can see a net difference of minus $14,000, which is a minus 11%. So that's how, you know, just a quick sense, kind of, and I'll take a peek at that. And it's literally every cost center that you see on our expenditures. This is exactly how our monthly financial reports are set up, so I know these are all cost centers everybody's very familiar with. So we wanted to make sure to replicate everything the best and closest we could. You will see very large increases on health insurance. You will see very large increases around utilities. And then in other places, like athletics, for instance, it looks like we have a 7.6% increase. We do, but remember, there was a request for an athletic director slash kind of student-life director. So, you know, of this increase, $75,000 of that increase is that salary. So that's in here. And our teacher line, right, the elementary schools that asked for another second-grade teacher. So that's in there. So again, that's the work that we'll do as we go through the next series of budget workshops as to, as to work on. And through the workshops, all of our cost center managers will be here to speak specifically to their items. So any questions that you have for music, athletics, the high school, facilities, curriculum, special education, et cetera, you know, we'll all be here to talk through those as we go through the workshop process. Social services, heating of buildings, you can see the heating of buildings is up 18%. Utilities is up 16.9%. As we go through, you'll see the, the benefits. Where are we here? I wanted to highlight that, because it was a large one. Benefits in, no, that's not that line. It's, bear with me, what's here? Or is it here? Other insurance? Let me find it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because that was a large one. We saw a large increase in, I'm probably looking at it, and I don't even see it.
Well, it's not the 1% if you...
You looking for a large decrease?
No, it was an increase of 10, it was over 10%. Yeah. Oh, here.
Retirement.
That's retirement. Anyhow, it's, it's in here. I have to find it. But you'll see, when you get to the, the health insurance line, that's up over 10%. And we saw, not only an increase, we'll see an increase in the rate, but we also saw a really large increase in the usage this year, particularly with our new hires. So just some things to flag as you're looking through this. And then our special education services, the private schools, collaboratives, on a district transportation. And some of this were, we'll fix, it looks like we've got some coding issues here, so we'll work on that. Overall, this is probably one of the most important pieces to look at at this point. This was our budget before charter and school choice. I want to mention that. You might remember, last year, we actually have a budget of $29.7 million. The operating budget is $27.9 million, right? But once you add the charter and school choice sending tuition, and the state assigns us those. So those are numbers that we will not have until the governor files her budget, and this starts to work its way through the legislature. But right now, with everything that is being requested, with all the increases, it's about a $2 million, $2.1 million increase to the operating budget, which is about 7%. Now, I can sit here and say 100% that we, we know that this is a large increase, and is not where we will land, but this is with everything in that all of the schools and all of the departments have asked for.
And this is where the work begins.
This is where the work begins, yeah.
Which is why we just scheduled three other meetings.
That's right. So let me pause here before we look at capital. Any questions? Does the format make sense? So when you get this in your email, you can start going through and taking a look.
I love this.
And it would be, it would be probably the most helpful for you to look at the people that are presenting or working with the school committee, the cost centers are working with the school committee next Thursday, because it's a lot to take in all at once, there's a ton of information here. But we'll do these in kind of two pieces, so it might be a good place to start. We okay to look at the capital?
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Let me go. Tara, is this capital?
Sure.
Okay. All right, yep, all right, thank you.
It's counting in your eyes.
I know. I can't, even my glasses, I can't see. Our new technician just started, and he said, Dr. DeFalco, I had to have him help me with the Google thing. Why is your screen and your font so big? I said, how long you been here, kidding? Wait, you get in your holder. So our capital budget is, and you can see the breakdown by enrollment percentages. So the projected percentages for fiscal '25 for Blackstone, this is based on our current enrollment, is 74.3%, and Milville is at 25.7%. That is our student enrollment breakdown.
Can I ask, has Milville's increased over the last few years? Some reason I thought it was like around 7822, I remember from a few years ago.
So I have the breakdown for the last six years. I can share if you're interested.
Yeah, just carry on.
I do have it. I don't have it on this, but I do have it. Let me make a note, and I'll be able to get that out to you tomorrow.
I mean, I always just roughly say 7525, but I know it was like, years ago, it was
You're not wrong.
Okay. I thought, yeah.
100%.
Yeah, I can include it in tomorrow's update, so everybody has it. I want to highlight this bolded final payment here for the middle school. The middle school debt will be paid off in fiscal '25. So the building will be completely paid off, and that is at the tune. The final payment is $168,506.25. So...
I mean, it's 20 years old, right? It's 20.
Yeah, yep. So that's some, that's good news to our communities, that the middle school...
Time for renovation.
Middle school is paid for. I believe this bill, Lynn Welch and I, from Unibank, were talking, and she, I believe this bill is due in August. So we will be happy to cut the check for the final payment for our middle school, which is awesome. The roof projects, you can see where they, where we stand as far as the high school, and the balance that is left there, and the breakdown for both Blackstone and Milville. Underneath roof projects, you can see the complex. Milville's roof, $46,600, that's the payment for this year. And then we get into the boiler projects. So the boiler payment is, is up a bit in Blackstone, and also up a bit in Milville. Remember, we're still closing those out, so we did some short-term borrowing. We have, we finalized the bond for JFK. We can't finalize the bond, we have a ban for Milville, because MSBA hasn't closed out the boiler project in Milville yet. They are very, very backlogged. Their, their goal is to have it closed out by June. So just FYI. You can see a change in the payment there. Overall, we left the asbestos out of this, because the asbestos built into the budget. You'll see when we did, when Scott does the facilities budget at his workshop, you'll see the asbestos mitigation and cleanup work in there. So we took it out of here. So this is just straight capital. These bottom numbers here, the $74,610 and $25,390, that is the, it's just there as a reminder, but it is in our budget. That is the OPEB, just as a, and we have gone back and forth over where this belongs. So it's, we have it in the budget. This is not included in the numbers that are in bold just above it, but I just have it there as a, as a placeholder, as a reminder, because I know that it's a discussion piece that we've had a couple of times. But you can see the total capital costs for Blackstone with just the projects that are listed here. And the reason I'm saying just the projects that are listed here, as far as the building projects, is because Scott and the Small Capital Planning Committee has been working on a, kind of a shortlist of small capital projects that Scott will be presenting at the facilities conversation as well to the school committee, that we could bring forward to, you know, both Blackstone and Milville, if the committee wants to put those forward. So those are not in here. These are just the actual bank payments on the facilities projects that we have.
Could I, can I just ask, and I may, maybe prematurely, but the, the capital committee, those projects, are those just gonna be for the district-owned schools?
Not all of them. There are a couple on that list. There is a couple of items for Milville, there's a couple of items, like a retaining role, a generator, a Blackstone, so...
That would have to go as a separate one?
That would need to go to the finance or capital committees of both towns.
Yeah, they'd have to be warrant articles.
Yep. So we'll put forward the whole list, and then the committee can kind of talk through each one of those. I think we have about six, Scott, six or seven? I think we have about six, Scott, six or seven, I think, on the list right now. And it just as a reminder that that Small Capital Planning Group is Scott, Ross Nickel from Blackstone, Matt Plant, and Steve Tringali was on it, but he stepped back from Millville. So we don't have a Millville resident or a Millville member on that at this point, but we'll see if we can-
We found Steve, make sure he wasn't confused about building community capital-
Okay.
That we had with the small capital.
Great. Thank you.
And did you say the asbestos abatement of BMR is in the budget?
In the budget.
In the 30 million proposed?
Yep. And most of it, as you'll see, and Scott will go through this, and we're double-checking everything with Amar, who's our asbestos management plan coordinator, or some similar title of that. We're just double-checking everything with the state to make sure that there's still, you might remember, at one point, they had quoted us over $250,000 worth of work, but because we were accepted in the MSBA pipeline, they said that we did not need to go through all of that work, but just essentially do the testing and cleaning that we've been doing. So we're just double-checking everything.
Is that the plan moving forward right now, just testing and cleaning? Is this, we're just monitoring essentially?
That's correct. That's what's in the budget. So we're verifying that to make sure. The other piece, I believe that's in the budget, and again, Scott will get into the weeds of this when we do the facilities presentation, but I do believe we have to update our asbestos management plan, and that can come to the tune, somewhere of $25,000 to $30,000. Do I have that right, Scott? So-
Every three years, asbestos.
Yeah.
So essentially, this is like under building maintenance for the-
Exactly.
For the monitoring.
That's right.
Perfect.
Yep. That's how we broke it down for FY '25. Any questions on the capital items at this point? And again, we'll come back and revisit all of this, but this is just kind of a headline to FY '25.
I just think OPEB needs to be labeled on that sheet.
Sure.
And final payment needs to be-
We put, so we put OPEB in the local, it's in the budget budget. So if you were to, if you were to go to, when you get the budget tomorrow and you go to like Ctrl+F to like find, you can type in OPEB, it'll come up. It's in there. There's $100,000 that's in there for OPEB.
From who? Split up between the towns?
Yep, split up between the towns.
It's on the bottom of this, you said.
I put it here as a placeholder, and I did it because every year, there's a conversation, does it belong here? Does it belong in the local budget?
It actually, it's probably, it should be a warrant article. Millville does it as a warrant article, right?
Yes. They don't, they believe that it needs to be, so it's a warrant article. But Blackstone had it in the budget.
It should be consistent.
So I put it in both places so we can-
It actually, it's maybe a different conversation.
I believe it should be, because if they don't want to approve it, and like, it shouldn't be affecting our operating budget.
That's right. Yeah.
So if the $100,000 is not going to be funded by both towns and it's voted down on a separate warrant article, then nobody pays that money. But if it's in our operating budget and they don't want to support it, and we have it in the operating budget in just language, then we're losing $100,000 in our operating budget. So that's why we don't do it that way.
It's an obligation of the towns. But just like, it's a capital, essentially a capital expense that they, you know, we never did until recently. And it should be, and it should be, it should be no different than, for example, the pay of the school committee. That, you know what I mean? It should be its own article every year that the, you know, this stipends, I mean, I hate to minimize it like that.
That's in our budget.
But it should be a standard article in both towns.
That too is in the operating budget. The seconds are in the operating budget.
It's a separate warrant article, though.
It is a separate warrant.
But if they don't approve it, the money stays in our operating, they already approved it.
I got you.
And they voted down our-
But it should be, I wouldn't meant for the, I shouldn't have used that example, but it should be a standard article annually for, and it's a town, it's, it's actually the town's responsibility to come up with this. We should have done that a long time ago, but we're here now and, and whatever the agreement with the towns has, you know, because I know Millville wanted to increase it last year to 200,000 and Blackstone backed down, but we got to the starting point of getting it going at 100,000. And the district's still contributing, what, the 50 and the 20?
Yes.
Last year, with 70,000 from the district.
Yep.
From the staff.
From the staff and the E&amp;D, which is of the goodness of our hearts.
Yeah, all administrators, all unit B, all unit A employees, we contribute.
Yeah.
Yep. Every pay period, we all contribute.
Yeah.
In addition to what the school committee puts forward.
I'll mention it, Blackstone.
We have more than we had three years ago, five years ago.
Yeah.
We have, we actually have OPEB.
Yes. Yep.
So we certainly can, we can take it out of the budget, we can put it here, and we'll do it as a warrant article. Is that what the, yeah, committee wants to do with that? I'm happy to do that, that's totally fine. We just, we always went back and forth.
That is what we did last year.
But did we do it as a warrant article in both towns?
Millville.
We did it in Millville.
Blackstone stayed with the, with the budget.
The budget.
It's actually not good for Blackstone's own budget, because it should be used out of a, out of, it should be a warrant article and used from free cash or somewhere else. And it'll, it'll have a less of an impact on the taxpayer in Blackstone, the way Millville did it. Not much, but any little bit helps.
I will definitely make that change. Anything else on FY '25?
So you're sending this out with the links tomorrow?
Yes. The only request I would have is just if you cannot change any of the numbers.
Oh, boy.
Only, and then when we meet, you guys are going to try to change the numbers just because it will screw up everything that we have.
I bet a print line up.
I won't know if something was changed or moved or-
You share it without edit access.
What we're-
You can do view only.
Okay. What we're going to do is, you'll notice that if you look at tonight's, and this is to keep things really clean for everybody, you'll notice it's dated. So at every workshop and every iteration, we're going to update and put the new date on it, so that there's no confusion of, you know, which one was this and all that. So we'll try to keep it simple. Does that work?
Don't send it to me.
You can look at it, just don't touch it.
Give me a binder.
So we'll make a view only, we'll do a view only for now. Okay. Perfect. All right. Anything else on this before we move on? Okay. Am I okay to go to the business office?
Yeah.
Great. In your packets to be received and placed on file is the personnel report. And I just want to add, I want to give an update in terms of vacancies, just so everybody knows exactly where we are. We currently have a, and I'm going to run through the vacancies first, and then I'll just explain where we stand with each one. We currently have a head custodian vacancy. We have a speech and language pathologist. Sometimes you'll hear referred to as an SLP, that's speech-language pathologist vacancy. We have a reading specialist vacancy. We have our HR specialist, our director of finance and operations. We have a special education teacher at the middle school, and we have a paraprofessional. So that's what is currently vacant. Where each one of those stands, we have a finalist for the paraprofessional I'm interviewing tomorrow. We are currently interviewing a candidate at the building level, so with the principal and some teachers for the special ed position. The director of finance and operations, we're still screening. I can give a quick update to the committee afterwards, but we're still screening for that position. We have an interview tomorrow for our HR specialist, which we are very excited about. We have our reading specialist finalist interview with me tomorrow. Our speech and language pathologist finalist, I'm interviewing tomorrow. And we are still entertaining some different ideas with our head custodian. We've done some rounds of interviews and Scott is still working with a couple of candidates. So of those vacancies, we have one, two, three finalists, and we have candidates in three of the other vacancies. So we are in very good shape. I do want to share that the engineering teacher position at the high school, that we held out and did lots of interviews, and we finally landed on a great candidate. He is teaching engineering in Providence Public Schools. He is starting with us next week. He's very excited to be joining the team, so. He met with, you might remember Mr. McGee. I don't know if you remember Tim McGee or not, but he was the former engineering teacher. He was actually retired administrator from Rhode Island and came and taught in our program for a couple of years. He has actually come back to train our new, our new hire and to help him work through all of the equipment, partner with our tech team to make sure that all of our equipment's updated. Very appreciative of Mr. McGee's support of our new, of our new teacher. So he will be starting, and our engineering classes will be in full throttle.
For second semester.
The second semester.
That's great.
So good news. Any questions on any of the vacancies? I will share that if you drive down 195 or 95, you will see school systems with billboards advertising for staff. So I'm very pleased with where we are as a school system with our faculty and our new The expenditure report is in your packet. Again, you can see the breakdown as far as what was budgeted, the balance, what was spent year-to-date. And on the backside of that one pager is the total balance. I want to take a minute and look over that. Again, if you want to, you can see our insurance employees active. You can see we're about 127,000 overspent. That's a very hard number to forecast, because we don't know what the new employees are going to, whether they're going to take the insurance, whether it's, they're going to need a family plan, a personal plan. So each year when we build this, we build in obviously our increase, and we go a little bit over just to anticipate, but you can see the turnover in staff. We had a huge increase in those needing the insurance. So that is built into, that's why this year's number also looks so big in FY '25. And I will tell you, the work that's happening right now, if you look at, just to give you a sense, our classroom, if you flip to the front page and you see the 2305 line, it's the instruction classroom teacher line, it has the 681,000. I can tell you with 100% certainty that is not accurate, with 100% certainty. Because as I just explained to you, almost every single one of our teacher positions are filled. That number is not correct. So I've asked for a full accounting of everything that's being charged to that line and that has been charged to that line since July 1st, and I am reviewing that with Ron myself. So Ron is our accountant, just as a reminder, and we don't see him often, so. So Ron and I are working through this, going line by line by line. There is no way we have that amount of money in this line. There's something wrong. So I anticipate that number changing once Ron and I are finished with our analysis. And I envision potentially the instruction specialist teacher line that could change. And then the instructional assistant line could change a bit as well. So I'm just forecasting that. I will have that for you at the February meeting. This was something that I had discussed with our exiting finance director, and she wasn't quite able to put her thumb on what the issue was. So I'm going to do this with Ron myself and figure out why that line has 680,000 in. It just, it can't. It's not possible. If we had a variety of classroom teacher vacancies and had them for the year, I would say, sure, like that was, there are some salary savings, but we actually, when I hired new employees, I actually calculated the person who left, how much we were paying them, if they had the benefits and who we hired, and if they got the benefits. And Monique and I on payroll literally worked through every single new hire cost. So that number cannot be accurate. It's got to be an issue with our system.
Or just double-check the 8.4 million.
Yep.
Doing over, over budget.
Yeah. I believe, we checked that, and I believe that number is accurate. And all of those individuals, so what we are doing is, we are breaking down that line in terms of what was in FY '24. We have all of that.
I mean, you're not negative.
No, 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 no. I'm saying it, though, because I also don't want to give a false positive. Right? Like, you could look at this number and like, oh, yeah, this is fine, yeah, we can do this, we can do that. I'm not going to come to the committee and say, oh, I need $100,000, and we'll take it from salaries. Like, that can't be accurate.
So are we upright, but-
No.
Something's changed.
Yep. So I just want to make sure that you are aware that, we are aware of that, and we are digging very deeply into those few lines.
I mean, to me, it looks like there's insurance money in that line.
Well, the other, the other issue is, that doesn't get discussed, is our FICA, which is a 1.45% that you have to put on top of everybody's salary. So we do build that in to the budget.
Okay.
That's here. I don't, I just don't know if it's in our salaries or if it's somewhere else. So I'm just, the only reason I'm forecasting this is because I don't want to come to February meeting and say, surprise, we didn't think this number was right, so we looked into it and this is what it actually is. So I'm just forecasting, if it changes, it's because we identified where the challenge was, and I will explain what that is. But it is not in the- In your packet, we, I'm sorry, were there any questions on that? In your packet, we have a donation that we'd like the school committee to accept. We had a parent, Mrs. Christie Lambert, donate the amount of $3,500 to help offset the costs for any of our eighth graders that are attending the Washington DC trip that might be having a hard time covering the costs of the trip. So her company, Banner Doors, I guess, is putting forward a donation that some, they have written a check already, but we have not cashed it until the school committee approves the donation.
So looking for a motion to accept the donation from Banner Doors on behalf of Ms. Christie, Mrs. Christie Lambert, in the amount of $3,500.
So moved.
Thank you, Ted. Second by third. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Janice, thank you.
And a big thank you to Mrs. Lambert and Banner Doors. That's fantastic for our kids. And that concludes the business office report.
Thank you so much. Facilities. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. All the plumbing issues at the high school have been taken care of, the two faucets, the bathrooms, and the locker room, the toilets, and the four-inch water main that was dripping in the all-purpose room. Water was shut off on the 28th of December, and all unnecessary repairs were made. Plumbing's in good shape. We had Podursky Corporation come out and clean the two pumping stations that we're responsible for. One is on the high school field, the other is located at Early Village. They came out, cleaned those, that's done twice a year. So we will be doing it again late spring. There was a large crack found inside the doorway to the custodial area in the floor, and I believe that's where the water is blowing in from the rain underneath the door and into that crack and dripping down into the all-purpose room. So my plan is to dry it out completely and add some hydraulic cement to it, and hopefully that takes care of the issue. We did put sandbags on it this previous storm, and it did help out. However, on the adjacent side of that area is a storage area that we store our trash barrels in, and there may be a crack in that floor as well, too. I had the head custodian clean it out today so that we can get a better look at it. And Energy Electric came out and performed their quarterly test on the fire panel. They found a faulty module. They'll be coming back out to address that as soon as they get the module.
That's the new panel?
That's the new panel.
Okay.
Over here at the middle school, the custodians over the holiday break replaced approximately 125 floor tiles, VCT floor tiles. All the edges of the floor tiles in the middle are bowing up, and it's creating a tripping hazard. We purchased new tiles at Home Depot, it's the same color, the same manufacturer, however, because they're different lots, they don't blend in. So I am looking at getting quotes to have the section, the center section replaced. Kind of an eyesore when you're looking, you see different colored floor tiles. So we'll get a quote for that, and maybe that's something we can put under the capital plan as well. JFK, the fire alarm went off again this previous Sunday at 1:30 a.m. Fire department called me when I arrived. We did a walkthrough. They saw a motion detector that was flashing, they thought that was the bad detector, but that was flashing, they thought that was the bad detector, but that was a motion detector. I did find the faulty, what I hope is the faulty smoke detector in the hallway. Usually when a detector goes bad, it stays lit up red. However, this one was not lit up red, but it wasn't flashing green, indicating that it was okay, so. We took it off, they were able to reset the panel after we took that one off, so another indication that that is probably the problem. This alarm system actually went off twice over the holiday break, I believe one was New Year's Day. Ironically, it was the same time, 1:30 in the morning, so the building must be doing a check at that time, and that's when it finds it. They didn't call me that time, so when I did get notified that they went out, I said, please, give me a call next time it happens, because I want to be there. We've got to find out what's wrong, obviously, so. Precision alarm came out, they did replace the smoke detector, and everything's normal so far. So I'll keep you updated on that.
Scott, can I have one piece? What you didn't, what you didn't share is that after the 1:30 alarm, you stayed and started plowing.
I did.
And shoveling out the school.
I did. That was in the middle of a snowstorm.
Thank you for that.
There was already like three inches of wet slushy snow on the road. I had my cleanup crew to do the plowing, scheduled to come in at 5:00, so I figured I'd just get a jump on it. I stayed out till 5:00 when they came in, I went back, and then, then I was back at noon time to finish the cleanup.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
What a mess that was. You're welcome. During a recent fire pump test at Millville Elementary School, they found an angle valve that was faulty, it's not holding, stripping water. They're coming out on the 25th to replace that, January 25th. That was the latest. Questions, terms? Not gonna, will we get no more snow?
So will you let us know when Dr. Gulick meets with you with his new process?
I have no plans to meet with Dr. Gulick, we just happened to pass in the hallway and had a brief conversation, but, but if that's what the school committee would like me to do, I'm absolutely willing to help out in any way I can. I know there has to be some testing, there's gonna be some water running, I just didn't.
You made no promises, we know.
Yeah, I did not make any plans to run a alarm and turn on faucets, I wanted to make sure.
I mean, I just think.
The school committee had planned.
If we're asking for 180 days of full capacity, we have to somehow help with that.
I don't know if there's a procedure that we can follow and have documentation that during what they said, and.
But I was saying to Jason before the meeting started, I don't, I don't know how much we were actually using and how much was being flushed, because we have not used water except for plumbing for years.
Scott, you said there's records, right?
Only when we had the bulk water delivered.
Okay. But they were still flushing that?
There's records, but only once they put in that pump station.
Were they flushing the bulk water?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no way to separate it from.
Yeah, it was getting dumped. We can't say flushed, we were dumping the water that was paid for.
Yeah.
So.
Well, coincident, coincidentally, I have meter readings from the Kennedy School, you could kind of base it off of the amount of use based on the amount of students, so you'll have an idea of what.
Since we moved this.
I just handed it over. Chairman of the Millville School Committee, selectmen, but I can get you another copy, get you an idea. We had an idea of a couple thousand gallons a day, I think it was.
Well, we were getting 10,000 gallons delivered.
But they were flushing it.
And we were flushing it, using it for cooking, washing hands, you know, just not pointing.
How many gallons were we flushing? Like, that's right, like, when we say, to the point, I think, that you're making, when we say full-capacity use, well, if we were using 1,500 gallons a day, I'm making these numbers up, but we were flushing 500 gallons, it's really 1,000 gallon usage that, right, that's coming.
It was all going down the drain, none of it was being consumed.
Yeah, it's true, dude. Even the toilets down the drain, so.
Let's see, like, the student population at the Kennedy School, there's one meter at the complex, so you can have an idea of how much the complex, the complex doesn't use that much water, because, you know, all things considered, so. It maybe is a thought, maybe, maybe 3,500 gallons a week, I'm not sure, when you actually break it down to the actual usage when the, when the building's being.
I mean, the water we're using, we're treating, and just smokes enough.
It's wasting, yeah.
But if you ever seen that system do a backflush, you'd be disgusted with the water that comes out of that. I believe I have video.
We have seen many, yeah.
Yep. But shows the filter is doing its job, though, too.
Well, if you could keep us updated, if that conversation does happen, document it for yourself and for us, please.
Will do.
Just so we know. Just, I, I just, unfortunately, there's some trust issues, like, I don't want him to say, Dr. Gulick to say, I asked him to do it.
Correct.
And I don't want you to be in that position, so.
I mean, I was led to believe that Dr. Gulick had a conversation with Scott today.
It did sound like that.
And you had walked out when he said it.
Yeah.
And I was like, where did he go?
They had a plan, you know, that it was.
The door was locked, I saw Chuck trying to get in, and then I went up to unlock the door, and I ran into the former hockey bus driver, so he could drive my ear, and I'm like, I gotta go. He was actually here for the.
They said, they talked to him.
Yeah, while you were talking about the bus, you were getting thrown under it.
I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing better than having these meetings recorded, you know, because we can sit here all day and say, he said, she said, and we're still doing it about last May, and I know what I, I'm like, all I, all you have to do is go back and watch the video, so.
Yeah.
Do I feel like doing that? Not really. I can't tell you how many times I've watched that meeting already. All right.
First words?
Any other questions for Scott? We're moving on then. Thank you.
Thank you.
To use of facilities, we have one, the Cabaret fundraiser.
I'll make a motion to approve the Cabaret fundraiser.
Blackstone Council on Aging. Motion made by Dan.
Second.
Second by Tara.
Is this a standard rate, like, by the way, is that?
Custodian, yes.
Is that a fee, the standard, the fee for the?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, they use it every year, or they have a half couple.
This is the second annual.
Yeah. Second annual Cabaret. Oh, is it second annual, like, yeah, I know, I've seen this before.
All those in favor of the use of facilities requests, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And we have a request. Two pieces of equipment that are no longer functional and beyond repair, two rowing machines, sorry, three pieces of equipment, two rowing machines and one stair climber. Motion to guard the.
I just have a question on those, I'm sorry. How old is this equipment?
Maybe 20.
The Vikings used it.
I don't know. The side of the building's 20 years old, so.
Is it from the?
Original.
I think so.
Is it?
I mean, we can say, don't dispose of it, just.
I just wondered if it, if it.
We've donated stuff.
Like, how, how much it was used and if it really is worth repair, or if we're gonna just dispose.
Beyond repair?
Yeah, like, beyond repair. Like, who looked at it?
I think it was that, the, I believe it was the custodian here. But I can ask Scott, I, I don't believe Scott's evaluated it.
I'm just curious, before we dispose of it, just double-check.
I mean, there are things, so they're saying it's in not, it's in disrepair. There are also times when they were asked to dispose of it just because it's not functional anymore, or, you know, use, we disposed of cash registers once and ended up donating them, I think, to the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, and the freezer, you had a, like, a refrigerator.
Freezer, yeah, so.
I can ask Scott to look at it.
We do depend on the people asking, but, I guess. We can double-check that, so no motion.
Curious.
That's fine.
I'll let you know what Scott finds out.
I'm wondering, who determined it's no longer functional? Can, could it possibly be donated?
Yeah, can it be donated? Can it be fixed? I mean.
We're gonna pass over this?
Yeah, we're not, not moving on that.
Should we wanna, could we make a motion saying it can be donated if it's in repair, or do you just want to hold up completely?
Are we utilizing that room?
Yeah, they're trying to.
Do we have more questions?
Yeah, we'll just pass over it until we get.
Revitalizing our fitness room, yes, is in her budget, is she going to ask us for a new?
Oh.
I did not see a rowing machine or stepper in there.
I mean, there's so many virtual things now, they just might want the space.
Just wait.
Okay. We will wait for answers. Moving on to school committee forum, does anyone have anything that has been since last year that we've been together?
I'd just, just like to mention again that the Anna overhead doors and Mrs. Christie and I got a very generous donation, sure it'll be, it'll be used, good to go a long way in their, in their trip to DC. Oh, and nomination papers are out today, in Blackstone, anyway, so.
Who needs to get them in Blackstone?
Do we know? Oh, you?
All right.
I'd imagine they're open in Millville as well.
Yeah, probably.
Same election day.
I may have received a letter in the mail.
Why you, oh, it's you?
Terrancy.
Make sure you get the right signatures from the right towns, guys.
Assuming a lot there, Dan.
Make sure you get the right information to get the right signatures from the right towns, then, how about that?
Well, and that goes for saying all, all positions, elected.
Yes.
Positions in both towns, that I don't think people realize that it's this time of year because the election's in April.
Yeah.
But you have to turn them in, you know the date, February?
February 12th.
By February 12th, to be on the April ballot. So, though we've had many write-ins, it's important to have your name where it belongs. Any other school committee forum? I'll just wish Dan a happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Little birdie told us. Sorry, we don't have cake for you.
It's okay.
There's no cake.
Okay.
Ted, did you have something?
I don't.
All right.
Being with you guys was a gift in disguise.
Exactly where you wanted to be for your birthday.
Disappointed Carrie wasn't here, but I have Ted.
No hugs coming, yeah, brother.
Oh, hugs coming.
No hugs for the birthday, boys. All right, so executive session, I believe we do not need to enter into executive session. Upcoming meeting, meetings will be workshop, January 18th, 6:30 p.m. School Building Committee will meet at 6:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m.?
5:30.
Oh, school building.
Yeah.
3:00.